Good evening. It's 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review the agenda and have any additions or modifications?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
I have none, Mayor.
And I would like to take Item E from the consent agenda and bring it into Items for Commission Action and also, let's see, Item A for Items for Commission Action. Can we move it up to right after appointments? Is that, Kelly? Ian, are you online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
My thought is we're gonna have those, we have some updates on the City Hall. If some whackies on the phone, it'd be good to get, go ahead and get those updates after the change order.
Were you wanting to move Item A up ahead of those or just the?
No, just move the update at the end of the meeting after the change orders.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought we were taking everything up. So, let's see. That would be under Item 7, Reports. Item A. We'll move it up and put it with Item 5, Items for Commission Action, Item A. We'll add that in.
And he may touch on the programming a little bit, too, which is B, under that, under Reports.
So then the two modifications would be Item E and Items for Commission Action and Item A under Reports would be included with Item A discussion for Items for Commission Action. No further changes and I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the agenda as modified.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 2, Appointments. Housing Authority, we have one resignation of an unexpired term which ends April 11th, 2023. Applications are due by 5:00 PM September 4th, 2020. Item B is Library Board. We have one resignation. It's an unexpired term that ends May 1st, 2022. Applications are due by 5:00 PM September 18th, 2020. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings. And at this time, I will open a public hearing for a CDBG grant for sewer system improvements. Kelly?
Mayor, Susan Gilmore is on the phone from SCK Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Hi, yes, this is Susan. I'm with the Regional Planning Commission. And you guys are having a public hearing this evening for a proposed sewer system project where you want to apply for CDBG funding. And just quickly, the project application is gonna be for sewer system improvement, generally bounded by the city limits of independence. The project will entail the following improvements: 6,600 linear feet of sanitary sewer pipe lining, 5,600 linear feet of sanitary sewer pipe reaming, replacing 23 manholes, lining 29 manholes, improving 136 service connections, and replacement of Lakeview lift station. The total project cost is estimated at 1.4 million with a maximum grant request of 700,000. So now that's the project description. And now we just ask if the public has any comments.
Does anyone in the public have a comment that they'd like to address the commission? We have none, so I'll close the public hearing and open it for questions from the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Susan?
I do not.
Was this also gonna include Basin 5?
Yes, this did include basin, improvements to Basin 5. That's the location for the manhole lining and sewer line replacement. Is that correct, Susan?
And Sean is here.
Kelly, do you have, I don't have the full, let me grab the PER real quick.
Susan, Sean Turner is here. So let him.
Oh, good. Sean?
Yes, the items that Susan mentioned, the lineal footage of sewer and manholes, that is all in Basin 5. It's part of Basin 5, the Phase 2 that the plans have previously been completed for.
Any further?
And my other question is, this is dependent on receiving the grant. And let me see, I may be a little confused here.
Now, the, so.
Was there, were there? This was actually gonna be more than what the original cost was identified by? I may be confused with something else. For some reason, I've got it in my head that there's, we may have to come up with an additional $83,000.
No, not on this one.
Not on this one, okay.
With this one, the city has applied for a KDHE low-interest loan for 3.1 million.
Okay.
And then we've broken out a couple of pieces of that. It's Basin 5, Phase 2, and the Lakeview to make a project that fit the CDBG program pretty well. Its total, total cost is 1.4 million. 700,000 will come from the KDHE loan and 700,000 will come from the CDBG programs.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Susan, what is the schedule to get notified or the selection for the CDBG? And then when would we know if we're going to receive any grant funds from it?
So the deadline for the application is September 25th. So we'll submit that and they will review those and then announce awards typically in January. Although this year is a little bit of a, an unusual year because they are also in the knee-deep in dealing with CB funding. So they may not get those awarded right in January, but hopefully soon thereafter. So we typically don't see construction for a while. But you will, you'll hear the first of the year whether you're successful with the application.
Does it have to be bid all in one package? Can we have the plans ready for part of, part of the work and part has got to be designed? Is that correct, Sean, or is it all available?
These two pieces that were previously designed, so you would be able to bid all of this CDBG project in the same package.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's the only question I had, so if there's no further questions from the commission, I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize the city to submit an application for a CDBG grant for sewer system improvements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings to Consider Condemnation of the Following Structures as Dangerous and Unsafe. Since we have a list, I'll just open and close the hearing for each piece of property if that would, would work. So Sean, I'll open the public hearing for 201 East Main Street.
Okay. We recommend that the commission condemn this property as dangerous and unsafe. We've made multiple attempts to make contact with the owner without success. The owner has moved out of state and will not return texts or voice messages left on his phone.
Is there anyone present to represent the owner tonight? Anyone in the public interested in expressing an opinion or concern? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and open this for commission discussion. I've, I found out late this afternoon that the address that was indicated on the letters and the contact was not correct. It was to another individual. So the owner, I visited with Jeff about it. And since we haven't notified the owner and because of an incorrect address where everything had been sent, what action should we take? Can we proceed or legally do we have to go another route since another party received the emails that the registered owner never resided at?
You should probably start and start all over.
Okay.
So we just need to reschedule the public hearing and, and give that process time to happen?
We have to notify the owner and then set a date for the public hearing. So with this, we would would adjourn, we wouldn't table the hearing, would we? The proper action would be to just remove it from consideration at this time?
Jeff, if they got that address directly from the county, are we required to do more research beyond what the county records show?
It's a difficult question to answer. You're required to use due diligence to use the last known address. The problem is the county's posted address is not right. There was some discrepancies. There was another deed filed by an individual, and this is his address, but the deed wasn't valid. So the county, when they took that individual's name off the title and reverted back to the church that owns it, didn't reinstate the church's address. The church's address is given, when that deed was recorded, was 1404 Irving. And the county has that information. Why they didn't, you know, reinstate that address, I can't tell you. But the address that was mailed out, you know, by the city was in reliance on what the county had, and it was just not right. And these things happen. This isn't the first time or the last time that that will happen.
The thing we want to do is just make sure that we don't find ourself in situations, since we know the address is not correct and that the church never used that address, or neither did Doug Anderson, then have we done our due diligence at this time that it's became aware to us. So just in protecting the city's interest, I think at this time, we should remove it from consideration tonight.
Yeah. I agree, yeah.
If that's legal's opinion, okay. So do we need a motion to remove it, or can we just strike it based on?
Just, I just don't, just don't take action.
Okay. Okay, then let's go to the next. I'll open the public hearing for 704 West Main Street. Sean?
Okay, we met with the owner in June 2020 and reviewed the structure and requested a timeline of repairs. Timeline still has not been submitted to the Building Department. The owner did come to City Hall and informed city clerks he would try to do some work. The owner also owns 301 North 11th, and no work or progress is occurring at this location. And this has been going on for two years, trying to get a timeline out of the owner. So the staff recommends condemnation of the structure.
Okay. Is the property owner present? Next would be the public. Is anyone here from the public who would like to express an interest or concern? Okay, with that, then I'll close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sean?
I have none.
Melissa?
The condition of the house, this house I hadn't looked at. But just from the pictures that are shown, what is the, is there structural problems with the house itself?
I would have to get Dave's opinion on that.
Okay.
I'm not positive on that.
But the house has basically been vacant for probably a couple of years?
Right.
Taking a gas?
Yes.
And no improvements have been made to it?
Correct.
Okay. And this is based on complaints from the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sean.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution condemning 704 West Main as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I will open the public hearing for 800 East Edison.
Okay, city staff was contacted by the family, and they've requested that we adjourn this and give them a chance to rehab the house. I guess this family grew up in this house, so they wanted to rehab it. David has requested a timeline of repairs, and he's waiting on that. So staff recommends adjourning the hearing until November 19th.
Is a representative of the property owner present? And if not, is public interest at this time? Then I will close the public hearing. Commission discussion. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for Sean?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
If there are no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move to adjourn the public hearing for 90 days to November 19th, 2020 at 5:30, 5:30 PM for 800 East Edison Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next property, I'll open the public hearing for 816 East Magnolia Street. Sean?
This structure was involved in a fire, and it's a total loss. The owner of the property has indicated he would like to demo the structure and clear the lot, but is asking for time to accomplish the work. And it's Dave's understanding, he will be here at the meeting. And I don't know if he's here, but staff recommends condemnation as dangerous and unsafe.
Is the property owner present? Are there, is there anyone from the, the public that would like to express an interest? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open for commission discussion. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any questions for Sean?
I do not.
Commissioner Yoususi?
I do not.
So I understand that they expressed a desire to raise the house.
Correct.
But.
He's one time.
Okay. Well, they'll still give them 30 days if we proceed, that they can go ahead. So there's no need to waiting for a response. So if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution condemning 816 East Magnolia Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 909 West Chestnut Street.
This is a structure that's been vacant and is in poor condition. The Building Department has not been contacted by the owner. Staff recommends condemnation as dangerous and unsafe.
Is the owner present or an owner's representative present tonight? Is there anyone in the public who would like to express interest? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, it's open for discussion.
I have no questions.
I have no questions, Mayor.
If there's no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution condemning 909 West Chestnut as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 912 West Laurel Street.
This structure is vacant, has a large open hole in the roof that has compromised the front portion of the structure. This is owned by Hannah's House, and staff has been in contact with them, and they are aware we're recommending condemnation. So staff recommends condemnation as dangerous and unsafe.
Okay. Is the property owner present or a representative for the property owner? Anyone in the public would like to express their interest in the property? If not, then I will close the public hearing and open for commission discussion. Commissioner Yoususi, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
If there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution condemning 912 West Laurel Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 1020 West Myrtle Street.
This structure's been vacant and in poor condition for a long time. The owner of the structure, Morning Star, has recently sold this house to Cassandra Gates, and she's submitted a timeline of repairs. So staff recommends adjourning the hearing for 90 days.
Is the property owner present? Anyone from the public like to express their interest? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we're open for discussion. Any further questions?
90 days would make that date November 19th, 2020. And do we need to assign a time?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
5:30 PM?
So your recommendation was to adjourn?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So what we're, we're considering is a, is a 90-day extension with adjourning the hearing until November 19th. So Commissioners, are you in agreement with this for the property? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to adjourn the public hearing for 90 days to November 19th, 2020 at 5:30 PM for 1020 West Myrtle Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 1117 West Main Street.
This structure's been vacant and in disrepair for several years now. Staff's been in contact with the owner, who currently lives in Florida. And the owner has informed staff, she has no intentions of repairing the structure and has abandoned it and will let it go back to the county. So staff recommends condemnation of the structure.
Okay, so I can take it with that, that even though I asked whether the property owner is present, we can assume that's a negative and public interest in the property? If there is none, then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we are now open for discussion. Any further discussion?
I have no questions.
I have no questions, Mayor.
Okay, with that, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution condemning 1117 West Main Street as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 1214 West Main Street.
The owner of this property has done a rent-to-own contract with a new owner who has moved into the house. City staff came aware when electrical inspection for new electrical service and disconnect was requested by a licensed electrician. A significant investment was made by the new owner. It's not the Building Department's policy to condemn an occupied residence, or does the Building Code Enforcement Office enforce appearance? I.e., painting of the house, paint, you know, the paint coming off the house? We do have a lot of activity occurring right now with vacant housing being purchased and repaired. This is new owners, landlords, and people trying to flip structures. So it's Building Inspector's recommendation to rescind the condemnation. Staff is aware that if the owner fails and the house becomes vacant again, we will need to restart the process.
Okay. Is the property owner present tonight? Public interest? I'll close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion. I guess first, if we haven't condemned it, would the action be to rescind condemnation, or what would be the wording for that, Jeff?
Has anything been recorded with the registered deeds yet?
Usually the resolutions setting the hearings are, did you record that? Yes, he said it was.
Yeah, if, if something's recorded as registered deeds, you need to rescind it. Otherwise, if somebody does a title check, they think it's being condemned.
Okay.
So adopt a resolution rescinding it, and that resolution can then be recorded also. And then you get cleared title at that point.
Okay. So for this, we would be looking at a, tonight, a resolution to?
It's a standard resolution we've used. I don't have the wording in front of me. But if you want to make a motion to approve a resolution rescinding the condemnation, then we can follow up with the actual document.
Okay. Okay, so we got that. We'll call for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a resolution to rescind condemnation of 1214 West Main Street.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I'll open a public hearing for 2009 and 1/2 North Penn Avenue.
So this structure was involved in a fire, and the owner has submitted a timeline of repair. So staff recommends adjourning this hearing until November 19th.
Is the owner present today? If not, is there anyone in the public that would like to express their interest in the property? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, have any further questions for Sean?
I do not.
I have none.
Okay, at this time, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to adjourn the public hearing for 90 days to November 19th, 2020 at 5:30 PM for 2009 and 1/2 North Penn Avenue.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sean. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. With the adoption of the agenda, we had one modification. So at this time, I will call for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the modification of moving E. to items for commission action.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Items for commission action. Item A, consider change orders eight, nine, and ten regarding the nineteen sixteen City Hall project.
We have Ian on the phone, Mayor.
Okay. How are you, Ian?
Oh, pretty good. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
These three change orders are the additional credit that we had previously discussed. Change order number eight is additional credit for the roof flashing and parapet cap at the east apparatus, the addition roof that didn't get included in change order number seven. Change order number nine is a credit for the additional wood blocking for the roof installation that was included in change order number three. And then change order number ten is the elimination of windows on the east facade of the building. And all of these include material and labor.
Commissioner Hayes, do you have any questions concerning the change orders?
I do not.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm good, Mayor.
On the change orders that we've gotten, the contract completion date hasn't been indicated from any modification from the original completion schedule. With the ten change orders, how has that been modified? Is it still the same as contracted or has the completion date been extended?
None of these previous ten change orders have modified the contract date. However, there have been some delays with the receipt of the windows from the manufacturer. And so we've requested the contractor prepare a change order for change in the contract time that we're hoping he'll get to us by the end of this week.
You know, the, what do we have, a little over four hundred days to complete the project?
The original end date for the contract would have been toward the end of September.
Okay. Well, you know, you look at that many days and the installation of the windows is pretty independent from anything else and it's taken them over four hundred days to get approved shop drawings and get them ordered and get them installed. And I've only seen that happen one other time and it was because the contractor wasn't performing his work. Because, you know, this, this extension is going to cost the city money and additional inspection for you. And, you know, I, I guess I can't see us not discussing an extension at this time of going ahead and granting it because of why does it take four hundred days to do one product on a job that's not being held up by, by weather or anything else? You know, the problems that they found with blocking could have been determined early. The shipping, you know, and delays, it's not going to take additional time beyond if it had have been approached on day one, it could have been completed in schedule.
Right, and we've, we've requested that the contractor, as part of the change order, prepare, prepare a timeline to accompany it that he's arguing that there are some overlaps here with some of the uncertainties due to the phase two of the project and which windows would actually end up being necessary. He stated one of the issues is that the manufacturer was not willing to release any shop drawings for our approval until a final order was actually placed.
But still, that could have been brought up for discussion and pushed at the beginning of the job instead of three-fourths of the way through the project.
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I wouldn't be in favor of considering any extension until the project is done. And then it's questionable, I don't know.
Well, my understanding of project management is that they should have placed the window order on the critical path soon enough so that it could arrive well in advance of its need in the construction cycle. So I don't understand either why at this point, this late date, that we're still waiting on windows.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mayor and Commissioner. And also, I thought the four hundred day timeline was very generous to where the project should have been completed, well within that timeline. Matter of fact, I was hoping that that timeline would have, would have been, they would have beat that timeline, so it was very generous and I don't, I don't quite see why this needs to be extended out.
So, you know, I don't know if, if he wants to go ahead and give you the information, but at this time, I'm not interested in, in processing that change order. You know, we've, even with, with your time, it was, original contract was based on like six months completion and now, you know, we had to negotiate with you on a per visit to cover the extended completion time and now those are going to go on longer than what we anticipated, so. I think that's, you kind of hurt our, our feeling on extending his contract. I noticed, is there any more question concerning the change orders?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
And my initial question regarding the change order was the completion day is, is usually noted, whether it was extended or not, and from the change orders we've received, there's no extension, so we're, right now, we're at the present, the, the original date of completion. So if there's no further questions regarding the change orders, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve change orders eight, nine, and ten for a total deduct of thirty thousand one hundred seven, thirty thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents for the nineteen sixteen City Hall Phase One project.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We wanted to also include at this time an update on the construction process of the other features. So Ian, do you want to enlighten us?
Yeah, so on the Phase One of the project, they have completed, the masons are complete with all of their work now and have completed the installation of the replacement basement window lentils with that, that replacement stainless steel detail that we had the, the change order for. And so I'll be planning here probably for our progress meeting next month, once they have some windows installed, to come down and take a look at window installation and also the, do a punch on the mason's work so that they can come back before the winter months, before it gets cold, to fix anything that they, they need to. And other than that, the, the roofer was complete with all of their work at the beginning of the month. So really, the window installation is the only, only piece of project at this point that's still needing completion.
Have they got a delivery schedule or delivery date set for the windows?
Yes, originally, it was going to be the first week of August and the manufacturer pushed that back to September fourth now. They were citing COVID-related issues at the factory.
What is, how long did he think it would take to install the windows?
He provided us with an updated project schedule based on the fact that they were needing to wait on a second batch window order for the basement windows until the masons were done with their work to make sure that the measurements of the openings were correct post the installation of the, the replacement lentils. His new project schedule is projecting, as an estimate, the completion date is January thirty-first.
So we get into a problem with sealant on the exterior windows, finding warm days to get that done and?
Correct, yes. He, he said that his, that schedule is trying to take into account the cold days over the winter.
I'm not very happy to hear that. That's an understatement. January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
So that's extending four more months of your inspection to?
I, I do have a question, Mayor. Are there penalties tied to this as far as exceeding the original timeline this project was to be completed?
Ian, there were, well, it's not a penalty, it's liquidated damage. The problem in assessing liquidated damages on an unoccupied building is pretty difficult. So, and where he claims that it's COVID-related and delivery-related and liquidated damages are basically out the window, aren't they, Ian? Excuse the pun, but, no, no, wait, it's not out the window, because we don't have them.
We don't have windows yet.
Yeah.
Vance and I are, are looking into that as, as part of our discussions with contractor on, on his revised schedule and, and his pending request for more time.
Yeah, because one, one thing that is normally in the contract that if the contractor by not performing causes the owner additional expense beyond the change order, that he can be assessed those charges, which the completion at the end of September and if now we're facing four months of additional architectural inspection, that could be looked at as being assessed back to the contractor. Because, you know, I guess if you're looking at a ninety-day completion project, a hundred and twenty-day completion project, which normally window replacement projects are within that range, but now you've got a completion schedule of over four hundred days, that it's basically tuck pointing, windows, roof, it's hard to look that that phase would take that long. So I think that might be something that we need to review as, as we see the numbers come together.
I would be, I would be in favor of that.
So other than, than the windows, the project is substantially complete?
Yes, they're, they're at a hundred percent on the majority of the rest of the, the project contract.
All the mechanical cleanup and demolition has been, been done?
Yeah, there was, there was still a few, a few pipes here and there that were needing to be capped off based on the MEP engineer's final review and their punch list, but other than that, yes, all the, all the demo work interior is, is largely complete.
Okay. Any further questions, Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you updating us and getting the change orders for us through. Was there anything else we needed to discuss with the?
On the programming, an update on the programming?
On the, the programming, can you give us an update? Have you got information or where are we on it?
Discussion, item B.
We've met twice now with city staff with some revised program layouts based on the revised program that city staff provided us with reduced square footages for a lot of the spaces. And so we're going to be meeting again with city staff on Thursday next week to give the police chief a chance to run the layout past his staff and the police department. And then we'll be, hoping within the next few weeks after that, we'll be ready to, to bring it back to you all and, and present it with a finalized program layout that everyone's happy with, so.
So you've got the square footage and basically the program has been finalized on square footage reductions?
That's correct, yes.
Then can you get copies to the commission or get them to Kelly so she can get us copies? So we'll see where we're standing on size.
Yes, Kelly, Kelly should have the copy of that.
Okay. I think we need to look at it before it gets too far down the road, too, that we don't end up like we did after the last review, so.
So far with the plans, everything is fitting within the existing footprint, so.
Okay. Did you have a question, Commissioner Hayes?
I did not.
Okay. Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, well, I appreciate the update and look forward to seeing the program and how it changed for the two facilities so we can kind of, you know, use your square foot cost to see if we're down around the price range where we wanted to shoot for. So, thank you, or?
Mayor, on that, on that item, I think Commissioner Hayes may have wanted, wanted to give an update on where we're at on the, the information he asked for on Building D.
I, I can't hear real good with the?
I can, I can say that with regard to programming and actual Building D cost development, we have met and we have identified a list of abnormal or irregular costs that are, would, would go along with long-term occupant. would go along with long-term occupancy and, but those costs are in development. We still have to research and, and come up with a solid figure for cost for those irregular items. So that is my report, is that they're, they're developing some costs for long-term occupancy.
It is a little more complicated on, on Building D since you've got a unique systems with expensive control valves spread out through the building, and you've got a boiler and a chiller, looking at replacement costs for, you know, do you keep operating one that's designed for 160,000 square feet for 60, 70,000 square feet, or do you initially downsize those for operational savings and total replacement on it? A lot of little pieces of roofs and here and there.
Indeed, and so these, and we haven't really developed that because the mindset has been, it's a temporary location instead of actually developing actual costs for ownership, which would, which would be substantial with the complexity of the systems that there currently exist in the building.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Ian, are you still there?
Yep, I'm here.
I guess we'll, if we're done with Ian, we might as well say goodbye and we'll see you later, unless you want to sit for the rest of the meeting and listen for us.
No, I think I'll say goodbye for the evening.
Yeah, I kind of detected in that tone of laughter, your excitement to be with us tonight.
We heard the sound of a vehicle leaving, we thought maybe that was you taking off.
Yeah. But it does get easier. So if we're complete with that item, then I will go to item B.
Yes, thank you.
Consider items relating to reconstructing the South Apron run-up area. That's one. Consider bids received and award contract. Consider supplemental agreement number one with H.W. Lochner. And number three, consider authorizing submitting a KAIPE emergency grant application to cover bid costs exceeding the engineer's estimate and original grant award. So Kelly, do you want to?
We have Matt Jacobs on the phone from Lochner to review this item, Mayor.
Are you there, Matt?
Yes, yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and City Commission.
Good evening.
Yeah, my name's Matt Jacobs, someone with Lochner, I'm the project manager for this project. And the three items that you referred to, Mayor, are in regards to the reconstruction project of the South Apron run-up area at the airport. This project is being funded through two grants from the Kansas Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation. They issued a design grant in state fiscal year 2020 to cover 95% of the design cost. And there was also a construction grant issued in state fiscal year 2020 to cover 90% of the construction and construction services cost. At the time the application was prepared back in 2018, it was based on our estimate of cost to do the project. It was submitted to KDOT, it was not selected for award in 2019, however, it was selected for award in 2020. At that time, the total estimated cost for construction was $770,000, and that did include construction observation and materials testing services. We bid the project in late June of this year. We had seven bids received for the project, and the low bid was submitted by J. Graham Construction out of Coffeyville, Kansas. The third price for the work was 779,000, let me look here, 779,264 and 40 cents. We then took that price and updated the total project budget to include the actual bid amount and the construction services amount that's being presented as supplemental agreement number one, and compared that to the total estimated cost that was sent in at the time the application was sent to KDOT back in 2018. And in comparing the two, there was a deficiency of $88,600. So I talked with Logan Saletti, who handles the KAIPE program for KDOT, to see what she would recommend we do in regards to making up the difference in order to make this project whole. Her advice was to go ahead and have the city submit an emergency grant application for the difference in cost. That's what also has been prepared for the $88,600, with 90% of that being proposed to be funded by a future KDOT grant in order to make up that difference. I talked to her about the option of scaling back the project in order to bring it within budget, and she advised that the city go ahead and award the contract to J. Graham Construction and go ahead and send the emergency grant application into her office. What that allows for her group to do is they can evaluate that grant out now and not in a future state fiscal year 2021. So that's what has been prepared, and that's what's being presented to you all for your consideration.
So she must be confident, or it sounds to me like she's confident that if she's recommending to award the, the project for construction, that we will be highly considered for the emergency grant?
That's correct. That's the impression I had from her when we talked about the options. I will share with the commission that I mentioned for another project that we're working on that also received a 2020 grant from her office for construction. It came in under budget. I talked to her about if there's a possibility to reallocate funds between the two grants so that that could be accounted for immediately. She said their accounting does not allow for shifting of funds between projects. However, she did earmark that project to say, once the construction for that is complete and all the final costs have been incurred and the reimbursement submitted, that any leftover funds goes back into the KAIPE program for reallocation and use for other KDOT-funded aviation projects. So she made a note in regards to the potential to utilize that. I asked her on the timing of a grant, she said it could be awarded within weeks after receiving the application, or it could be several months. It really depends on Bob Brock, the director, has to review those, make the recommendation, and then go ahead and issue the grant. But in regards to your question, Mayor, yes, she seemed very positive in, in being able to fund this. When I asked her about whether we should consider scaling back the scope, she did not want to do that because she understands the importance of this project, the text drawn into the other users of the airport. So her advice was to go ahead and submit, and that will then trigger her ability to start looking for these emergency funds.
And I know KDOT has really been good to the city regarding the airport and grants, so.
They, yes.
On Graham's bid, you had indicated in your bid information alternate, an add alternate one and an add alternate two. They elected not to submit a price for add alternate two. What's the significance of alternate two?
Sure. So the base bid included all the items related to the reconstruction of the project except for the underlying subgrade layer. And what we realized at the time we did the geotechnical work, and we had course taken of the pavement and samples of the underlying material taken back to the lab and tested, is that it has the potential for fluctuation due to moisture or shrink swell. And therefore, in order to broaden what the contractor could provide a price for, we included add alternate number one for a treated subgrade utilizing either lime, fly ash, or cement, or if the contractor wasn't experienced in those types of operations and would rather overexcavate the area and bring, bring back 12 inches of an aggregate subbase, that was also the option. So the way the contract was set up, the contractor could bid on one or the other or both, whichever fit their scenario the best and made their bid the most competitive. So Graham elected to go ahead and submit on the chemical stabilization of the subgrade via add alternate number one instead of submitting on a thicker aggregate base.
Oh, okay. Commissioners, do you have any?
We also, yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to let the commission know as well that we did a background check, research called references on Graham Construction. I reached out to two other engineering firms that have worked with them or are preparing to work with them on projects. I also called the city of Bartlesville that had done several projects with this contractor as well. They all spoke very highly of their capabilities. They are KDOT pre-qualified for this type of work, and we reviewed the subcontractors that they have proposed for the project. We do have history with some of those, so we feel like they've got an adequate team capable of doing this work.
Graham is doing some sidewalk handicap ramps, but also, weren't they the low bidder on the extension of Peter Pan Road?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, and they did a, a good job on, on that, too, so that'll be good, okay?
Yes. The supplemental agreement that's been presented is for construction services that is provided by our staff. We'll have an individual in the field during construction monitoring the contractor, making sure things are being done correctly, tracking quantities. We also provide reviews of materials, cementals, and shop drawings pre-construction. It also includes materials acceptance testing of the concrete to make sure that it meets the specifications at the proper cure time. And that cost for that work that's included in the supplemental agreement has been put into the total project budget. Therefore, that's a fact, that's factored into where we're at based on estimated back in 2018 versus actual now.
Was that amount $6,000 or $7,144?
It was the total cost for construction observation. It's a 50 calendar day project plus the closeout of providing record drawings, final testing reports, and costing of certified payroll reports, which we review throughout the course of the project. That totaled up to $79,250. So it's 73,250, I believe, Mayor, for the construction services piece and $6,000 for the closeout.
I saw both figures in, in there and was having trouble tracking through what, how they related, so appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, but I have been on that part of the runway and the run-up area, and it is in extremely poor condition and is dangerous for propeller aircraft even operate in that area. So I'm so glad to see it getting repaired. They needed this as a resource for many years.
Commissioner Giussi, any questions?
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then at this time, I'll call for a motion.
Okay, I make, I've got three motions to make here.
Take the first one.
Okay.
And we'll vote on them as you make them.
Okay. I move to award the contract to J. Graham Construction Incorporated in the amount of $779,264 and 40 cents for the South Apron run-up area reconstruction base bid and add alternate number one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item number two, I move to approve a supplemental agreement, number one, with H.W. Lochner to extend their engineering services into the construction phase of the South Apron run-up area reconstruction.
Second.
With a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
And then number three, I move to authorize submitting a KAIPE emergency grant application to cover bid costs exceeding the engineer's estimate and original grant award.
Second.
A motion and a second has been given. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, well, thank you, Matt, we appreciate your help. Lochner's helped us on a lot of projects, and we hope that we can keep going out at the airport. It's really a, an asset to the city.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commission. We enjoy working with the city as well. So I'll go ahead and sign off, and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item C, consider proposals for replacing the 911 PSAP radio system. Chief Harris.
Gentlemen, I should start this conversation off by saying that if you look in the memo there that I addressed to the interim city manager, there is a surplus of money there in the unbudgeted 911 fund, and so we feel like this is a 911-eligible project, and we are in a pretty serious situation with our current equipment, so it's time to jump. So if there's anything specifically that you want to talk about, it's a pretty exhaustive bit of information there. I'm not sure where you'd like me to start.
Yeah, for me, I think you covered the situation pretty, pretty clear. It's a concern when we see that there's parts of town with our current system that we have reception and transmission problems from, definitely it's time to, to take action and do something. Commissioner Hayes, do you have any questions for Chief?
Based on what you recommended here, I know that you'd like the, the all-new telec system, and I don't disagree that cobbling a system together can at times cause interface issues and, and can cause problems with maintenance, maintenance in the future. So the, I guess my question for you is that, is that, is that, that's my assumption. Do you agree with that?
I, no, I think to call it cobbling is probably not fair. It, it's not cobbling it together. It, it would be a solid setup to use equipment that's already there. The biggest advantage is, of course, there are some things that it would be good to replace, but it's not an issue of, you know, duct taping and bungee cording it together. I mean, it, it'll still be a good system. It's just the ideal, on our, from our position, the ideal for as operations go is to go with the, for the, what is it, $14,000 difference. They build the system there, and then they bring it here and essentially plug and play versus the other option is the, the $14,000 savings is they come here, they start pulling parts off, putting their parts on to the parts that remain, that will remain anyways, so to speak. Am I saying that accurately? My expert's here, I can't see her, if you wouldn't mind, yeah. But I, I wouldn't go so far as to say cobbling. I, I think it would be, it would satisfyse to go with the $78,000 option.
Chief, are you looking at, at also the timeline, too, by implementing a, a new system, you're looking at less, less integrated time that's spent?
Less integrated time, less inconvenience to staff while they're, while they're in function, while they're operating as a 911 center, we can't hit the pause button, less time for them on site, and implementation will be quicker, is our understanding, and this situation is one where generally I try not to bring projects in when its time is of the essence. We try to, to look out and start replacing, you know, you don't want to replace parts on an airplane when they fail, you want to know their lifespan and replace them before they fail. And so we try to do that, but we are now, we're not failing in flight yet, but, you know, if we could have this done by October 1st instead of October 15th, the officers, myself, and dispatch would all sleep better. Melissa, this is Melissa Ady. She's our dispatch supervisor, and she can explain to you the advantages of spending the $14,000 more than the option number three is by going with option two.
Hello.
Hi, Melissa.
After speaking with our present, who we contract, our vendor who works on our radios presently, it would absolutely be more convenient and I feel less costly in the future as far as labor. So if they do need to come and work on something, if it's all brand-new and they install it to call them, they know exactly where to go and exactly what to work on. If we integrate our existing parts with what they're installing, I feel like it's going to be more troubleshooting time because they're probably going to have to work around it. But they're willing to use our existing parts as much as they can in order to install this radio system. Does that answer your question?
That was a poorly formed question, anyway, but the additional information, I think, is insightful, so thank you very much.
Okay.
And we, this company that we're dealing with, we look to get good support in reading the information that was presented to us. The Zetron, that they weren't responding to any of our questions, basically, they dropped us off the map.
Essentially, we've been wrestling with the Zetron system as far as how we're going to respond to their continuous business practice of, they come out with an update and then they, you know, you gotta pay $12,000 by September or you're going to be, you know, behind and all this stuff. And then we, the vendor we were using that we went with Zetron through, there's some licensing issues there, and so if we continue with Zetron, we've got to clear those licensing issues up. And that, you know, ultimately, yes, that's my responsibility, but, you know, we hired them as our experts to guide us through the radio communication process, and they did not guide us well through that licensing process. And, you know, that's a lesson learned for us. You know, you make a calendar entry and you start following up with your vendors about certain types of licensing, and everything else we do that with, but this Zetron issue we did not. So as far as I'm concerned, the customer service that we got from Zetron is pretty less than desirable. They withheld passwords, they, there were just many issues that we had with them. Response times were poor. We have since moved on to another vendor, and we're very pleased that that vendor has been able to optimize what we have and has gotten us through as far as we have gotten to this point, but it's time.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
So in option one, where you're showing $28,579, that's really not a total cost for that system. That's a partial, because then you've got licensing upgrades and other costs beyond what we're seeing here.
Yes, that's correct. We really cannot give you a solid number there. I don't know that we can even give you a solid range, but that is the number that I felt was most, that's a number that I can present with integrity. You know, I don't want to exaggerate the Zetron cost to get, to justify the telex cost. That's not what I'm here to do. And, you know, like I always often say, it's, we're at a pay-now-or-pay-later point, and we're going to continue to be nickel-and-dime by Zetron is my concern moving forward.
So when you look at the options, of course, option one is so much less than any of the others, and it's kind of misleading just looking at the numbers, but we need to consider all the additional costs just to be current on licensing and other things. So in option two, that's all-new equipment, new consoles, operation in the field and in dispatch, where option three then is new radios, but like Dean asked, just modifying some pieces assembled to what's there. And then option four is going with Motorola equipment.
Yes, and the option four, I should add, did not meet the request for proposal that we sent out, but I did include it in there just as a benchmark for pricing, but it did not meet our proposal. And to be clear, I believe that the radios, the actual radio unit itself, I believe we continue to use, yes? Or is this a brand-new radio, too? The broadcasting unit we reuse.
No, we'll use our existing radio.
Yes, this is actually the system, the nearest thing that I know how to compare it to is a fly-by-wire system on a plane. And, you know, as, this is the wire. This is, you know, it's, it's the brains of the radio system. It tells the radios how to function. So this is a software-type thing with some hardware to communicate with the radios that exist, but we're not replacing the actual radio that we broadcast over. Those are good.
Okay. So commissioners, we have two options that Chief Harrison is considering. Option two and three, he's recommending option two. What's your input? What, Commissioner Hayes, how do you see to approach?
A lot of people depend upon this system working seamlessly, depend upon it for life-and-death communications. It really, I believe, if we are going to be the resource to the community that we are in our 911 service, then we should have something that we can say, this is going to be dependable, this is going to be reliable, that we can service it effectively, and anticipate our needs reliably. So I think that it's worthy to consider that having an integrated, fully-integrated and consistent system throughout does all of that. And so when you think about the investment we make in dispatch and 911 service, on it, for an annual operating cost, this difference, the difference between the two is really not a very material difference in terms of our total cost of those operations. So I would prefer that we go with what I consider to be the higher-quality solution at the option number two, at the $92,138.
Commissioner Yussisi, you've reviewed the information, and what is your feeling?
I'm comfortable with option number two. I like that the point that you made about, it's something that we need to move forward with. Time is of the essence, and it's a critical part of our 911 system. I like the information that both of you put together on this. It was very informative, and it's very thorough, which I've come to expect from you, Chief. And I have no problem with option number two, which is what you requested. I think that's a good move.
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't know how many projects I've started that you try and save part of something and get by, and I regret that it wasn't all removed or end up going back to square one. And with communication equipment and $14,000, I think we'd be foolish in doing a disservice to the citizens to try and limp along with piecing it together. So, you know, I agree with my commissioners that I would be in favor of option two also. So with that, is there any further discussion and further questions for Chief Harrison or Melissa?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay, then at this time I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize the police department to purchase the telex radio system with all-new components.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have been in meeting for about an hour and a half. Would the commissioners be interested in a short break?
Indeed.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we take a five-minute adjournment, recess. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
6:56?
6:56. We'll return to session. Okay, we're back in session. Next item on the agenda is item D. Consider setting a special commission meeting to discuss the police department's response to the Chamber of Commerce Subcommittee, the Diversity Task Force Policing Subcommittee Concerns Regarding Police Reforms. Chief Harrison?
Yes, as you guys can see in the handout for this item, they have a lot of issues that they want to get answers on. And I felt that in today's atmosphere and society's view on law enforcement, as it's skewed by the media, it's not always accurately represented. And a lot of the things that are being talked about as new today have been around for quite some time, and many of them we've even implemented already. So I look forward to an opportunity to actually share that on a broader stage than, not that the Diversity Task Force isn't a good group to be a part of, but it is a small, my concern is that we need a broader reach. And I think that a commission meeting is an opportunity to definitely improve the outreach for the police department to share accurate information about our business practices and what we're doing to follow along with the 21st Century Policing Initiative and those kinds of things, and then to address their concerns. So I would love to have that opportunity to, alongside of the Diversity Task Force, and let them respond and work with them in that process.
I know, I was concerned when this developed months back, I don't know, March, April, sometime in that.
It was in June.
Was it in June?
Yes.
The first time we talked, Kelly set up an appointment with us, and I was impressed that you were way ahead of the game. You had had a lot of things implemented and were taking action before it was even in the news, so I think this is a good idea for us to have a public forum, a special commission meeting, to let the public know.
And it's such an exhaustive body of information that, you know, it just wouldn't be appropriate. I'm not sure how long that meeting will go, but it's, there's a lot to cover there. And so, you know, I'm debating on how to do that in an efficient manner, but it's important that each thing gets the light shined on it and that the community has the answers that they seek from the police department, and the community is owed those answers.
Commissioners, Commissioner Yussisi, do you have any questions for Chief Harrison?
No, not at this time, but I like you being ahead of the curve and already putting some plans in place and looking forward to this meeting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
I think the meeting would be appropriate and proactive, and I think it's consistent with your motive to be transparent and be in front of the public with not only yourself but the rest of your officers, so I welcome the meeting as well.
I appreciate that support, gentlemen.
So we're looking at the month of September. We have a commission meeting the 10th and the 24th. Kelly, what other date do we have a special meeting set?
Well, there's not, we don't have an item set yet, but there, you know, the third Wednesday's the 16th of September.
Okay, there's nothing except for that day on the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Okay.
And then I also have the October calendar, in case you want to look at that.
How long would it take you to get prepared, Chief?
I've been working on this since we first discussed it and I got the minutes to the meeting and started working with the Subcommittee and with the Diversity Task Force. I've been working on it a couple months, off and on, as I get a little time, and I'm pretty, I'd say about 60, 70, 80% done, somewhere in there. It's moving along pretty well. The, I do have an ask, and that is that my commitment to the Diversity Task Force, I don't believe in playing gotcha games. I believe in, you know, my opinion is that I believe in the concept of quick trust, and that is, I trust that their motivations are to bring about a more equitable and better-served community, and that's the same goal that I have. So the question then just becomes, how do we each take our values and achieve that goal? What's the strategy? And so I would like to work with them in this process, and once I have completed my presentation, I would like to share it with them, because I want them to prepare before they come to the meeting, because my hope is that they will choose to participate and address the commission as well. So in that vein, I would like to move it to late September, somewhere at least after the 16th. The 16th, we could probably get it done, but, you know, two to three weeks, four weeks from now would be optimal. I think that would give us time to get together, debate, share information, and then allow them to be prepared with anything else they think they might need to talk about based off of what they see.
The 30th is a Wednesday. It's the week after our regular commission meeting, so we wouldn't be doubling up on meetings in the same week. I don't know, commissioners, what's your schedules? And also, I ask for your thoughts, too, on scheduling a meeting.
Each of those Wednesdays appears to be free for me. The 23rd and the 30th would work, but I have also got a concern that if we are going to have a broader group participate, the timing of those meetings, those special meetings, we have been calling in the morning, but many of these people may already have obligations during the day. Maybe a 5:30 meeting might be more easy for them to make the attendance.
Exactly. 5:30 or 6:00 to allow them to get off work, but yeah, an evening meeting would be better. Commissioner Yussisi, what's your schedule?
September 30th, which that is a Wednesday, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would work for me. 6 o'clock, give people that are working time to attend the meeting, those that wish to attend, that would work for me.
How does that look for you, Chief?
Yes, gentlemen, that is, that's on, I'm putting it in the calendar now.
Do you think 5:30 or 6 o'clock, which?
I, knowing two of the people that are on that Subcommittee, I don't think either one of those times will be trouble for them to make, because one of them is on my advisory committee and we meet at 5:00. So he's able to make those meetings, and the other one is an administrator and can be there as needed. So I think that's, either time will probably work.
Okay. Commissioners, 5:30, 6:00, which is?
5:30 has worked well for many of our meetings, so 5:30.
5:30 is fine.
5:30, 5:30, September 30th. It would allow a meeting earlier, would allow for a little time if it should go an hour, hour and a half. a little time, if it should go an hour, hour and a half. Okay. Any further comments, Chief, or commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move to set a special meeting on September 30th, 2020, at 5:30 PM to discuss concerns of the Policing Subcommittee of the Diversity Task Force Subcommittee of the Independence Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Next item, item F. Consider adopting an ordinance levying a special assessment for the purpose of paying the cost and expense of condemnation and demolition on condemned property. Lacy?
Did we, did we have a motion on Alice training as well, Chief?
Yes, sir, we have, we have item E, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, let's jump back to E.
I'm sorry.
I had my tabs out of order. Thank you for catching that. So, let's consider scheduling a special commission meeting for security training and to develop a security response plan for the city commission meetings.
This is something I know you've expressed an interest in over the years, and we now have a program that we utilize as part of our community policing outreach, and that's Alice Training. And it's kind of along the lines of the Run, Hide, Fight-type training programs that are out there. There's two or three big ones. This is one of the big ones. We're very fortunate to have gotten an instructor in this. Sergeant Stafford, our community policing coordinator, teaches this class to the community, churches, factories, businesses, basically anybody that asks for it. We even go outside of town if we need to. And so, in response to some concerns that have been expressed to me over the years, we're ready to offer that to the commission. The first portion of it would be classroom essentially, and that would be the actual training on the program. The second portion would be practical exercises, and so, we will be run through a few drills where the instructor will come in as an active shooter, and we will use the techniques that Dustin teaches us against him. And then the third portion, we would need to go into executive session. For an exception is listed under KSA 754319, Section B-12, that allows for an executive session for security of government facilities and operations. And at that point, you would begin going through the assessment process for a commission meeting and developing the security plan as a group. And included in that would be all the people sitting in front of me now, as well as the department heads. And again, that would be in an executive session, or should be. We will have to do that either in an executive session or one commissioner at a time. That is not something that we can do publicly.
Something that, like that would be really difficult if we're gonna face a situation that we have to act as a group to try and get trained separately and expect it to work when we're all together and we need it to function, so.
Yes.
Yeah, the executive session is essential for that.
That is my recommendation. The judge and court staff, municipal court staff, are going to be requested to attend the training and the practical portion as well, but then they would leave, and we would do the same practice with them. We will go to the court on a later scheduled date and conduct a custom security response plan with them. But they have asked for this training, since our new judge took over, she asked for this training. So, I thought it would be great if we could just get it all in at one time and save, save our resource and time by being efficient that way.
So.
I just have a quick question. If, so, has the city polled the department heads and the municipal court judge to see what dates work for you?
Commissioner, we have not, to my knowledge, done that. If you don't mind, I'd like to cover that one. We have not. However, we're in a position where it's an important task. If the court cannot attend that day, we are certainly going to make time for them. This would just be nice if we could get them in with you guys. As far as city staff goes, I'll let the city manager speak to that.
We have one staff person that will be out at that time, but if you set it at the special meeting date on the 16th, the majority would be able to attend, I believe.
At 9:00 in the morning?
Yes.
You would all be in, in one day?
Yes, in the morning.
The classroom, and then the practical executive session, just follow.
Yes, I believe the classroom is about an hour, the practical about an hour, and then the security planning would just be dependent upon the scenario, you know, the location. And my advice would be to not just consider how we're set up now, but consider the setup that you would desire to be in once the pandemic situation is eased and we move back to where we were before. I don't know what the plan is for that, but if there is a plan to change back to the veterans' room or another location, I would say that we might as well just get all the options dealt with now and save time later.
Yeah. You gotta look at all scenarios at one time, so. So, is everybody's calendar clear for the?
And that's David Cowan's birthday, so maybe we'll have some cake.
It's his birthday?
That's what my calendar says.
Wow. Okay. Any questions for Chief at this time?
No, it sounds like it's an excellent opportunity to learn, and it's timely. Sooner the better.
Thanks, Chief. I'm good.
I think it's kind of odd. I remember growing up, getting up in the middle of the night, you know, eight or nine years old. Screen door was latched, the door was open, and, you know, that was just a way of life. To think we've gone from that to always locking the door at home when you go in, and now even considering unsafe situations, how to respond, so. Quite a few changes.
And I've been through this before with schoolteachers on their, for their training day. And I can tell you that if you guys are anything like schoolteachers, you'll really enjoy this. You'll have a, it's fun, it's funny, but it's very important.
I think it's sobering to realize that it could be reality.
It is.
Okay, well, at this time, if there's no further questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to set a special meeting on September 16th, 2020, at 9:00 AM to conduct Alice Training and develop a security response plan for city commission meetings.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Now, item F. Consider adopting an ordinance levying a special assessment for the purpose of paying the cost and expenses of condemnation and demolition on condemned properties. Is Lacy with us on phone?
I show she's on.
I, I am on, but I apologize, I have a very bad connection, so if you can't hear me, let me know.
I can hear you.
But basically, this is, this is just the ordinance allowing us to assess the cost of the demolition on the condemned properties. And there are quite a few on here. And that's because for quite some time now, we have, we've taken the houses out and done the demolition work, but we have not assessed it back to the taxpayer. And so, this, this ordinance is catching up to date of what we have taken out, but not assessed.
There is quite a list, quite an impressive total. Any questions for Lacy, commissioners?
I have none.
I'm good, Mayor.
Lacy, are you looking at, in the future, doing this kind of like the nuisance on the yards annually? Having an ordinance?
Well, I almost, I almost think it might be easier to assess them after, like when I'm paying the invoice of the demolition costs. So, it'd be in, you know, usually in groups of five or 10. And that might, might be easier. I'm open to suggestions. I, since this is the first one we've done, I don't really know what the best way is yet.
I think that that's a very, one, timely way to do it, so that as soon as we know what the costs are, the assessment is established. But, yeah, convenience also.
I'll need to check, there may be a one-year waiting period before you can do the assessment, but I'll check on that, by statute.
Oh, okay.
So, are, are these all over a year old, Lacy?
I believe so. David, do you know?
Wrong, David.
Yes, I believe they all are. I think these are from demos from 2018 and 2019.
Okay, so we'll be safe to go ahead and move on it tonight. Okay. Okay, good. Commissioners, any further questions?
I have none.
I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, with no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4334, assessing nuisance costs for demolitions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is consider an engineering agreement with Trans Systems for ADA overlays.
Trans Systems has submitted the agreement for engineering, design, and inspection of the 2020 overlay ADA curb ramps for $13,000. Staff recommends approval of the agreement.
Okay, this is relating to the overlay projects we just awarded a contract on a few meetings back.
Yes, Graham Construction approved a change order for the ADA work. I believe that was around $67,000 for that change order.
So, with their familiarity with what they've been working on, I notice there's no drawings or anything in particular that they're able to lay it out, and you'll just be confirming grades and conditions as they work?
Yes, we met with David and Mike Passer this morning and Graham, and reviewed the project. And basically, we'll be using detailed drawings from the current project and helping to apply those in the field with our inspectors to make sure they're ADA compliant.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, any further questions?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
If there's no questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement between the City of Independence and Trans Systems.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item H. Consider adopting a resolution establishing a business incentive policy as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
The chair and vice chair were not available to be here tonight, but this was covered in your joint session. And anything that was suggested that that session was modified. And it's in resolution form, and it's ready to be adopted. And we do have a couple of pending projects that we're working on.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the revisions or the final draft?
I've seen it, and I have no further questions.
I'm good also.
Okay, with that, then I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move to adopt a resolution establishing a business incentive policy as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Back to item E from the consent agenda. Consider initiating a public hearing before the Planning Commission to consider a text amendment removing building inspection responsibilities from the zoning code. And I guess some background or some understanding. It looked like, when I read it, that the building inspector would be removed, that the planning and the zoning administrator would now be doing building inspections.
Oh, no. Uh-uh. Because that would be mean. That's not happening.
I was thinking, Kelly, do you really know what you're asking for?
No, I don't. Well, I do, I said that wrong. Anyway, basically, it's just leaning up some codes. Years and years ago, the fire chief served as the zoning administrator and the building inspector when these codes were originally put together. And through the CRS program, they're trying to get them cleaned up. The building codes are actually in another section of the code that is not in the zoning code. And then they were duplicated in the zoning code, but they didn't really belong there. And so, Jeff has been trying to clean it up. So, this is taking it out of the zoning code, but it remains in the other part of the code that is non-zoning.
So, all the duties of the building inspector in the other part of the code?
Yes, are still there.
They were just duplicated?
Yeah, they were duplicated because it was essentially the same person that did both functions.
Okay.
At one time.
That's some of the duties of, well, like duties of the zoning administrator, 1701.1. Item B, conduct inspections of buildings, structures, and uses of land. I could understand the land inspection as zoning administrator. Your duty is land use.
Right.
But without seeing the other part of the code addressing the building inspector and looking at what we had just had detailed in, I thought, no. Because, you know, the building inspector to go to, or the zoning administrator inspecting buildings, same with occupancy certificates.
And I think that's more related to uses. So, you may have a conditional use or a variance or whatever that deals with a building. And there could be specific things relating to the building on that conditional use. And I think I interpret it as, as making sure that those things and those conditional use permits are followed. So, a lot of times you'll have screening or different things or setbacks. Jeff, is that accurate? It would only relate to what's in the zoning code.
Yeah, the, if you're a student of the city codes, which I devote my life to, there's a zoning code, and there's, I want to call a regular code. And the zoning code, if you look at it, talks, before we make these changes, talks about zoning administrator doing, and the building inspector, they cross lines, they overlap. But the language that's consistent is, talks about. is, talks about enforcement of these regulations. These regulations is a reference to the zoning code. If you'll notice, in the other part of the code, the regular code, that's where all the building code is. So you have to put the building inspector duties in the regular code to match up with the building codes, because that's where they are. Now, I told Kelly we could have a city staff meeting and take all the building codes and move them all to the zoning code.
Now they're, they're two separate entities, you know? Zoning is strictly land use, and building, I could see that you don't want...
The intent is to separate them, is that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and that's what, I guess, I was running behind on getting through the agenda and didn't have time to dig to see if the building section had the same requirements, because when I was comparing the ordinance that we just passed in June to this, it, yeah, the building inspector was outlined as a building inspector in that. And there was no reference over to the other section that I saw, so that's where I think part of my, well, my concern was having the, the land use becoming building inspector, that now you've got to have the skills of understanding the building codes on top of land use.
Yeah, no, it's, it would just be those things relating to zoning. I mean, there are some aesthetic and different things required in zoning too, not just the land use, like some, you know, require stone or whatever, landscaping and things like that.
So that was what I wanted clarified before we moved on, and I wasn't for sure with the other Commissioners if you had saw what was going on with the two.
I asked much, I asked much the same question in an email and got the same answer, so.
And I did email you and answer it, but you might not have gotten it before you got here.
Yeah, the, the questions, if, it helps for us to get each other's questions, but we can't go direct each other, because it was, and like I said, that I've been dealing with some things I got behind on my review, so I appreciate your tolerance with me.
Oh, no problem.
With that, then, if there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move the City initiate a public hearing before the Planning Commission to consider a text amendment removing building inspection responsibilities from the zoning code.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next, item six. Item A is, or item six is discussion. Item A is discuss special use sales tax. Kelly, did you want to give us an update on, on that, or is it just continued?
Did we miss the gun club one, or did I put that in the wrong order?
Oh, it's the wrong.
I put it in the wrong order, I'm sorry.
And D?
I'm sorry about that. I got them reversed. Basically, we have had some subcommittee meetings trying to put the information together. We did interview a citizen to get some feedback, and Commissioner Hayes has participated in that. And going forward, I just need to determine if one, if you want to participate, if you want to let Commissioner Hayes continue to participate in that. And we're just working on our communication materials and communication plan on what is going to be done with the sales tax prior to the vote. And that's our goal, so.
Okay. Would you like to sit in on a meeting now, kind of rotate, or Louis, do you?
I think Dean's taken, taken responsibility for it. I think he's, go ahead and continue and follow through with it.
Okay. Yeah. When you get a little closer, I'd like to sit in and see what direction you're going.
I think the, the output of these meetings is going to be a commu, a communication plan, and, and some communication documentation, and maybe some, some advertising elements of advertising that might help communicate what's, what the question is, and what the ballot language means. And that should be brought before the Commission when that's completed and ready to roll out. A lot of this conversation thus far has just been brainstorming.
Great, okay. Well, continue on. Item B is, well, we already did item B. Item C, discuss electrical issues at the North Park Boulevard Sports Complex.
You want to cover that one?
Yeah, we had a meeting the other day to try and discuss some questions that, you know, was presented of the need for the electrical upgrade because of flooding from Evergy, and looking at, I guess I initially brought up a question of, well, who's responsible for the, the maintenance? How is that into agreements? What kind of agreements do we have? And Kelly sent out, did, you didn't copy the other two Commissioners with that information, did you?
No, but I can send it out.
Yeah, she had the initial ordinance or resolution that created the Independence Recreation Commission and some inter-local agreements. The only reference is in the And of course, I probably pulled it out when I took some other thing. It, it said that the Rec Commission could operate, they could accept gifts and equipment, and they were to maintain grounds and buildings and parks like that. So that was the only reference that was noted. And of course, looking at what needs to be done, our, our part or their part, how that cost would be transpired. Probably came away with, with still questions of who, or how is it paid, joint. I think in the development of the ball fields thus far, City Rec has handled the construction and all the facilities. The city pays utilities, we pay the electric that's consumed, and provide the water and the trash. Not for sure if there's any gas there, but basically, the city's always paid for the utilities consumed. And now, looking at the, the electric not complying with current Evergy standards is a starting point, which then brings up the, the other issues of electricity being distributed to the buildings and all. So that was kind of the, the essence of the meeting, I think, what has, David has been working on a RFP for an engineer to look at a study of the facilities to make recommendation. But probably at, at this time, to bring both you, Louis, and Dean up to speed on what the history has been, it would be best to, if Kelly, you would email them the, the documents and allow you guys to review them, and then we come back and discuss it later.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, questions about that, or? Okay, now, we are ready to discuss actions recommended by the FAA as part of the Independence Gun Club lease approvals. I believe this relates to the proposed building construction?
Yes, and the short answer is, it's complicated. Working with the FAA, they want the land to be designated as non-aeronautical. And to do that, you have to go through a process, you have to have it surveyed, you have to, it has to be done formally on the federal register, and it's, it's quite a little process we, we need to do. The estimate I got for the survey from Cornerstone was $1,800 plus incidentals up to $100. I have not proceeded on that, because I wanted to touch base with you to see if you want me to proceed in that direction. I did ask some additional questions of the FAA, such as, once it's not classified as aeronautical property, do we still need to go back through them every time we do a lease? You know, does that modify that? I haven't gotten that response yet. The only modification that they made to the lease agreement is, you have to have a clause in there, it doesn't exceed 50 years. So Jeff made that modification, I sent that back, and I'm waiting on a response. I sent him an email again this afternoon, and I emailed him the 19th, asking some questions, and I haven't gotten responses on my last questions. But I need direction if I can go ahead with that $1,800 survey to get the meets and bounds done, to start this process of having it be non-aeronautical. And Lotner has agreed to do the other work on that at no charge to us, because they do so much other consulting work with us. And so it looks like the main expense is going to be the cost of the survey.
So is this going to be required on any piece of property out there that is going to have a building on it?
I, I don't know about that. I think this one was because their use has nothing to do with aviation. And, so I don't think it was so much, I mean, it, they had to review the lease, because when we modify leases out there and all the, the, and Jeff could answer this better than me, we have to run the leases by them on land leases, and they have to approve them. So, I mean, if it was an aviation-type lease, I don't know that it would be an issue as long as they, you know, met the height requirements that are required by the FAA. But since she picked up that it was a non-aeronautical use and said it needs to be reclassified, and that also would update her master plan and ALP and all the stuff.
The blue line is not the area, it's just the streets.
No, the, the area is right here. I actually took the, the drawing that was in the lease agreement, and I overlaid it over the aerial and matched it up, so that you could see exactly what it was.
So do they have to have a topo, or are they just establishing?
They just said a meets and bounds survey to describe a good legal, basically, on it, for the purpose of, of designating it as different than the rest of the property.
And Cornerstone understood it wasn't a topographical survey?
Yeah, I, I told them it was, I can go back and look, but I believe so. I told them it was a meets and bounds.
I'm thinking, I don't know, it might be more complicated to get it tied in to the boundaries at the airport, but I think the topo that we did at the water treatment plant was about 1,800. So I'm wondering if they understood that it was just meets and bounds, just setting the corners, and, or writing a legal description. That might have been the additional cost.
Yeah, I'm looking at the description, I don't see anything about a topo on here, but I will, I will ask him that question.
Because this, there hasn't been a legal description written of that piece of land, is there?
I have the drawings from the airport, the old airport Army Base. We do have those, and he may be able to pull some information off of that. I don't know how much detail was on there.
Probably he's going to have to establish from some starting point to get the corner. That's where the cost.
Well, they've done surveys out there, because all the bond issues with Cessna and those other companies, so they should have a good base.
So your question, are you asking us to?
Do you want me to proceed with this?
I think we need to, you know, it is our property, and we need to identify the bounds and the limits of what we're leasing to them. I, I think just clarify that it's not including a topo, but just establishing the limits of the property. If pins have to be set and write the description. Commissioner Hayes, do you?
This would be our responsibility in order to, you know, prepare the lease anyway, so I think we probably need to proceed.
Commissioner, you suisse?
Yeah, let's move forward on it. Get it done.
Okay. Do you want it in the form of a, a motion, or do you want to?
Sure, sure. It's sort of spending money.
What would be the language?
Move to authorize staff to proceed with the survey as required by the FAA for the Independence Gun Club.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
We already covered that.
Item seven, reports. Item A has been completed. Item B, the 2020 census update.
Well, I want to thank all of our door hangers, and two of them are sitting there at that table that has gotten some wear on their tennis shoes, hanging these door hangers for us. The latest statistics on this, this is the self-response rate. I did add in Montgomery County, because I found that today. Didn't have that in before, but Independence is, still leads the county, but we still have a little ways to go. Now, this is the self-response rate, and so I know the census takers are out now, and they're paying people visits, so I anticipate those, I don't know when those numbers will be added in to the total, but these are the ones that responded on their own. So that's where we're at with the census. And we do thank all the volunteers, or some other volunteers, the meter readers did the south side of, of town, and then we have volunteers for north of Maine and those census tracts that had the low response rates. And April organized that, so.
I think for the, the state, aren't we at 87%?
The, this is the self-response rate, which is what I looked up. So yes, I did get something that said that, but that's what those other, what the census takers have done, added on to the total, which I didn't have that. I just had the self-response rates. rates.
But our part adds to the total, so we?
Yes.
We need to look at what we're doing here, so that's great. Okay? Item, no further questions for Kelly on that, we'll move to item C, update from utilities director on Westminster Sanitary Sewer.
We've notified all the property owners on this. Some of them weren't happy.
Say what? I didn't understand.
One of them's not very happy with us. But due to some medical leave that I have to take, I'd like to have Tran Systems do the scope of services for this, to bid this out and get this done, get it moving, so we can continue on down the path with this.
So, I can't, with the microphone and the mask, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You want me to start from the beginning again?
Well, was your, were you asking the commission to authorize?
We had talked to Sean Turner about doing a scope for this, because I'm going to be gone on medical leave, and to keep this moving, and he's going to put the scope of work together and bid this out, so that, like I say, we can keep the project moving, and hopefully it won't be another seven years before it gets done.
So, Sean?
Yeah, we discussed the project with Kelly and Terry. It's a pretty straightforward project, just to get the survey services done, and for us to put together a bid packet to do that and assist with the bidding, we gave a fee of three thousand dollars, just that could be done on the on-call contract, but that would be our maximum fee to do that.
We need, we need to have something so we know we get apples to apples to compare for the bidders. So are you looking at a drawing?
Yeah, what we thought we would do in the email we sent was just take an aerial photo, basically find where the connection point is at the house, and reference the location of the new sewer with that, and come up with millennial footage to provide the contractor for the bid to be based on. Pretty straightforward.
And a performance spec on the drawings?
Yes.
A note or something?
Yes, pretty straightforward and a simple type drawing.
What's your schedule?
We should have that completed, just within the next two weeks, so we should be able to get it, it's out to bid.
Okay, yeah, that'll help keep it going while you're not available, then. Somebody has questions, they've got a basis to work from?
Sean can answer those questions if I have to, or Kelly, I'm sure David would be involved in it.
So we know what assessment to do, total assessment at the end.
Right, that's good. Okay, any more, any further questions, commissioners?
No.
I'm good.
Good, thank you. Item D, update on Spark funding?
That's Lacy's item.
Lacy?
Hi, okay, so previously, we've talked about this a little bit, and the Chronicle also had an article after the county commission meeting, but what the county has approved, and we, and they have now submitted to the state for funding for Spark One, Independence is potentially awarded about five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars and some change for reimbursement, and as well as some specific projects. And those projects include a new ambulance, some bunker gear, updates to the wireless connectivity around town, some PPE, and upgrades to Memorial Hall, and as well as upgrades to the electrical at the band show at the park. So we're very pleased with, we submitted every, everything that we could think of, and we were very, very pleased with the outcome, and think that the projects that are potentially awarded would be great enhancements and improvements to Independence, so we're very excited.
Okay, great, we can, good to see us getting some of our expenses back from, from the COVID pandemic, that's great. Any questions, commissioners, for Lacy?
No, that's very good news, thank you, Lacy.
Thank you for your work, Lacy.
Item E, city board minutes from the electrical board, any questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, item F, update from the police department?
Gentlemen, as you recall, we added a records clerk not too long ago, and I wanted to report back to you on some of the efficiencies that we've gained and the progress that we've been able to make with that position. So, some of the things that that's freed up other personnel to make sure that we fall into compliance with everything that we do. So, the first item is a KC just saw it, the Kansas Criminal Justice Information System. This is the databases that we use to enter stolen items, wanted persons, missing persons, license plates are in there, driver's licenses, these are different databases, fingerprints, those kinds of things. We're audited on those every three years, and this audit was to judge our NCIC transactions, so that's entries, and questioning, you know, sending in a driver's license, or a person, or a wanted, looking for wants or warrants on someone in the National Crime Information Center, and it's a data quality compliance, and we are following all of the rules that come with that. And we also had, the quality of the data that we enter is following the rules, and our local documentation supporting data entry is in compliance as well. So the use, the data entry, and then the records that we maintain about that data are all within compliance. The next thing is the 911 coordinating council fee review. Every year, our fee, the expenditures from 911 are reviewed to ensure that we're following the Kansas 911 Act. That, that review is conducted by the operations committee of the Kansas 911 Coordinating Council, which David Cowan is on. He's on that, on that particular committee, we're both on the council. And we were deemed compliant with the 911 Act on all expenditures for 2019. And the next item is Kansas Incident-Based Reporting System Compliance and Statistics for 2019. We call this KIBRs, and this is how we report crime stats to the state. And from 2012 to 2015, we did not report crime stats to the state. That was one of the first assignments I was given when I came to Independence, was to remedy that issue, and we remedied it. In 2017, we became compliant for the year of 2016, you're always a year behind. So in March, the previous year is due in March. And up until having a records clerk, we have made the deadline every year, but now there's actually timeline requirements, and we now have the personnel and the resources to meet those timeline requirements, and I believe that we are reporting weekly to the KIBR system. So, that's, that's a really big step for us, we're very pleased with that. And then, of course, and Melissa told me before we left, that at some point, we will have to go back and report those missing years. So we now have the personnel that we can begin on that project, if she hasn't started on it already. As far as the, what good is reporting information if you're not getting something from it? And so annually, this time every year, we get the KBI Crime Index. The Crime Index doesn't look at every single crime, but it looks at some categories of crime, the two overarching categories are property crime and violent crime. And some good news, we are following statewide trends, overall, crime is down two-point-six points per thousand residents. So, the violent crime rate rose two-point-seven points per thousand residents, this also followed statewide statistics. However, our property crime dropped fifteen-point-eight points per thousand residents, so I think that's really great. And I wish I would have wrote down what that rate is, but I think, I want to say it's in the forties. So basically, for every one thousand residents in Independence, we're going to have forty-some property crimes reported every year. One thing to note with that is, is that the FBI population, the FBI, for whatever reason, gives a number for the population that they use to determine that rate for the formula, and it's a big deal. So as that population number goes down, your, your rate, if the crimes, if you had fifty crimes and you had a hundred people and you reduced by ninety, you reduced to ninety people, and you still had fifty crimes, then your crime rate goes up, even though in actuality your crime did not go up. So, the, one thing to note is that we've, our population, according to the FBI statistics, and I don't know where they get their number from, because it does not match up with the US Census Bureau, because I've been using those numbers all day today. And, so I have some issue with that FBI number, but it doesn't really matter, because they didn't ask me. So, but our population, according to the FBI number, has declined four percent since 2016. And again, that declining population makes it more difficult to reduce that crime rate, as you can understand. So if we credited the same population, if we were given the same population rating as today, as we were in 2016, our crime rate would be down twelve-point-two percent overall since 2016. So that's how important that that number is, that they're using. And I just, I, I think it's more important to look and say, the potential is that the crime is down twelve-point-two percent overall for our community, and I don't know that the FBI is using a representative number for our community. The final thing to talk about is community, the community chest and their support of the K-9 program. This year, they have given us a twenty-five-hundred dollar grant for 2021. For 2020, they gave us twenty-five-hundred dollars, and 2019 and 2018, they gave us four thousand dollars. So I wanted to report to you that they are continuing to support our K-9 program, and it continues to be supported by donations.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any question for Chief Harrison?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Brings us to item, item eight, city manager comments?
We had some good news on the sales tax, which we provided copies for you. Lacy was having trouble with her connection, so I think she had to drop off the call, but David might be able to answer some of your questions. And it's pretty amazing, over the same time last year, you've got an increase of twenty-three-point-one So people are shopping local.
That's good news. Incentives have helped.
Yeah, yeah. And then, on the Peter Pan drainage improvements, we're going to bring that back to you, and talking to Sean Turner, they have determined that Tran Systems is going to take care of that, so that won't be an expense on the city. So, wanted to let you know that. Also working on a change on the city position, not quite done, but that's in the works. And then also, I just wanted to touch base, I know we put a lot of reports and a lot of things on the agenda. I try to put as much as I can on the consent agenda, but if there's any feedback you have for, for me, I know we've had some really long meetings, you know, just let me know, you know, if you want me to do things differently. I know, like, last time we were here, three hours, and, and the good news about long agendas means there's a lot of stuff going on, which is usually pretty positive. But I do also try to keep you informed on other things as well, but any feedback you want to give me on how you would like that done, just, just let me know, I know it gets, it gets a little long sometimes, so.
Well, with the public hearings and the number of condemnations, that takes a lot of time, but it's business, it's got to be done.
Right, and those are usually the second meeting of the month. Our first meeting was pretty long, too, so.
Yeah, we had some presentations and public hearings, so.
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Hayes?
I have done.
Commissioner, you Susie?
Yes, I do, I have one that I need to pass on. I've gotten some information, a call from one of the parents who was speaking for several, and it has to do with the crosswalk at the middle school, and they have football practice that gets out at 5:30. And if you're traveling, coming on Sycamore, coming north, headed south, with the vehicles that are parked in front of the Board of Education building, you have kind of a blind spot, and that, that speed limit of twenty miles an hour is only good till four o'clock. So some parents are concerned that with kids coming off of that practice field, and, and traffic moving at a, at a higher rate of speed than twenty miles per hour, that they're, they're wondering how, or they're, they're thinking that maybe there's a possibility that one of the kids could get hurt, just trying to cross in the crosswalk at that time. So this came up to me late, and I just told them I'd, I'd bring it to the, in Commissioner comments today, so.
And I'll pass it on to Terry, he has a traffic committee that can review that and see what they recommend.
The school used to have a sign that they would put up at the crosswalk, one that was in, used to, a stop sign, or it was kind of their, their action, it used to be, anyway.
Would it, would it be a flashing sign?
No, they, are you talking about the, down by the stairs, or are you talking about down at the intersection?
In the middle of the block.
In the middle of the block.
Down by the stair, the new stairs they just poured, okay, we can take a look at that. I'm, I'm not sure how that would, that's something we'd have to discuss with the Board of Education, for sure, yeah, but we can take a look at it.
Okay, it's just coming from that direction, you see enough of the, of the field, if you're coming from the south headed north, you can see that quite a ways away from the stoplight.
I think.
Kids crossing, but, but coming north, south by the middle school, there's some, with the Cars Park there, it does create a blind spot, and if you're going faster than you probably should, you know, you may not be aware, you may catch someone trying to, trying to run across or step out.
I think if, I think that the best solution might be to see if they'd be willing to compel the kids to cross down at the intersection, just south of, of that one in the middle of block, is my initial thoughts, but I'd certainly be happy to address that with them.
Okay, all right, thank you, chief, thank you, Kelly. That's it.
I need to make an announcement that the commission has been in negotiations with a candidate to fill the open position of the independent city manager. Notice has been received from the candidate that due to developing personal matters, he will not be able to finalize contracting for the position. And with this, the commission has met to discuss the matter, will be revising the advertisement for the position, and once the revisions are complete, the position will be advertised again. So, that was the only announcement I had or comment. So that brings us to the executive session. So, I move that we recess for an executive session for review and discussion of city manager applications pursuant to the non-elected. pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 754319B1. The meeting will resume at 8:35 in the civic center of Memorial Hall.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're back in session and I make a motion that we go to executive session and extend for another 15 minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We'll be back at, is that 8:50?
8:50, yeah, sorry.
Okay. We're now back in session and we'd like to go to another 15-minute extension of executive session. And this time, Kelly, we'd like for you to join us. So, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. I make a motion that we extend for another 15 minutes?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, we're back in session. There's no action taken from executive session. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.